Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to a German. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
You would remain standing. The invocation will be given by Commissioner Mark Harrison.
Pray with me. Our Father in heaven, one more time, we approach thy throne of grace and we thank you, Father, for the blessings of the day. We thank you for life and for health and, Lord, just all the many blessings of life that you bestow upon us. We thank you, Father, most of all, for salvation. We thank you for your dear son. We thank you for this county, for this state in which you've allowed us to be born and be a part of. We pray your blessings, Father, upon this meeting tonight and that the things that are said and done will be to your honor and to your glory. Forgive us for our sins. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Remain standing for the pledge to be led by the clerk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, call the row.
Each Commissioner record your presence.
We have twenty-three present tonight. The quorum and the two-thirds number will remain the same. We do have Commissioner Pomeroy absent. And he did call me. Everyone else is here. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda? Yes, sir.
Possible.
All right.
I'd like to add something to possible. I was recently made aware that there was a vacancy on budget from Commissioner Pomeroy. I would like to see if we can add that to the agenda tonight to get that filled since we're about to roll into budget season.
All right, motion. Is there a second? All right, a motion and a second. Is there any objection to this? Okay, well, then I'll ask that we place this on the board. Commissioner. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Actually, just received an email this morning from Commissioner Pomeroy telling me that he was going to resign from that committee. And Committee on Committees has not had a chance to even, I mean, I haven't even shared that with the rest of the board, so I think that Committee on Committees needs a chance to review it and do this the proper way with proper procedure.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Commissioner Shuf.
Ms. Chairman, I, you know, I believe the intent of this, I had another thing that I actually wanted to remove, but, so I've got two things to speak on, but I actually believe that the intent of this is to throw it back to Committee on Committees. That's what I was seconding here was that, you know, we're kind of officially removing Commissioner Pomeroy and it would go back to Committee on Committees to.
Let me clarify that, Commissioner. Is the intent to?
Or is it to do it tonight?
I'd like to do it tonight.
Tonight?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I think I'll remove my second. I'd like to just, just go ahead and do it. We can go ahead and remove it, but have the, I'm gonna remove my second. I mean, I'm happy to vote on it if somebody else wants to, but my understanding was that we were gonna throw it back to Committee on Committees. That's what I heard. All right, we have a second.
Is there, all right, we have a second.
Ms. Chairman, I had another thing. If we were gonna add something, I had something to remove and this just happened in budget, but I spoke with our legal department earlier. There was a six thousand dollar item.
Can we, let me come right back to you.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Don't want to get confused with where we are on this. All right, without, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like the law director just to remind us what Committee on Committees is for, what that committee's, what's created for. I mean, can, can somebody answer that? Can you answer that, Mr. Chairman, or can the, can the law director answer that?
Well, we, we can. I'll be glad to answer on that. The, the fact is that the Committee on Committee makes recommendations to the commission and the commission can accept or reject or do whatever they want to. As a matter of fact, I happen to be sitting, though, on this commission many years ago when Mr. Larry Hinton from Portland made a motion to sell this building after it was built and it received eight votes. And this building would have been sold by the power of the county commission had there been a majority vote. People like, well, Commissioner Harrison, maybe some others remember that, but in any event, this commission is, has the power to do whatever they choose to do, but normally, you're correct, it would go through committee to make recommendations.
So, since we just found out about this, why is nobody interested in, in just delaying this for two weeks for it to come to that meeting so that other people could submit their requests to want to be on that budget committee? I don't understand that.
Thank you. The, I'll ask the chairman to put this on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
I'm seeing a recording of the votes of thirteen to ten, so Mr. Harrison is appointed to fill the position on the Budget Committee. Well, that, you're right. You're exactly right, so we will put it on the agenda to be voted on at the committee tent. Thank you. All right. Mr. Shuf.
Ms. Chairman, I just, there was one item, and I apologize for speaking out of turn on this one earlier. There were six thousand dollars appropriated in budget we passed forward tonight for the Tax Assessor's Office for, for soft, for a software upgrade or a data request. And we were moving very quickly in budget. This is, this is my fault. But the Law Department informed me that we have a, kind of a dueling resolution currently going on in Legislative, and it would probably be appropriate to just go ahead and pull that, so without objection, I would like to, to defer, excuse me, just to pull this for, for one month.
What number is that, Commissioner?
That is.
Number five under.
Five, yes, sir.
All right, if everyone, if there's no objection, we will just pull that from the agenda, from his explanation. All right, anything else having to do with the agenda before we vote to approve it? Yes, sir.
Motion over here.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed almost everything because there was somebody else.
Okay, well, let's not get into all that. We're gonna, I understand, we're gonna set a record tonight. We're gonna get out of here at eight o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, don't shinx this. I'll go extremely quickly. We're pulling, I'm pulling the six thousand because there is a, currently a resolution happening in Legislative where we had requested a little more diligence from our ID department to see if we could, we could handle this data, handle kind of a data extract with existing data that we have before we did anything else. So what we'll end up doing is budget would basically be overriding something that was going in Legislative, and so that's why I pulled it. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any urgency here.
All right. We have a motion to approve the budget, I mean, the agenda, and, and a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. Place it on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
With fifteen votes, the agenda is set. We now have the consent agenda. Are there any changes there? If not, a motion? Second. All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. Approval of minutes? Second. All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. At this time, we get to do something sort of pleasant that helps our meeting along, I think, in a lighter way, and that's certificates of recognition. And in this case, we're getting to recognize quite a few young people tonight. We're real happy about that, the achievements that they have made. And I'll ask that Commissioner Miller come forward to, and Commissioner Holmes, to award some certificates.
Have the Beach High School Girls Bowling Team come forward, please? Gosh, just come on both sides. There we go. All right, these young ladies have, all, most of these girls have been bowling together since their freshman year at Beach High School, and they have accomplished many things. They've gone to state, they've, this year they actually won their district, and they are a great team. And Coach Mark, you're gonna have a hard time fulfilling some of these slots because most of these young ladies are seniors this year. So I will go ahead and read this and then we'll let Coach say a couple of things, but the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on the seventeenth day of March, 2025, does hereby honor and congratulate the Beach High School Girls Bowling Team for winning first place in their district. I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from Commissioner Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Coach Mark, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much and thank you for having us. Just in the last four years, you gotta keep in mind that if not maybe one, but not all of these girls even bowled before. So in the last four years, we've had three, two district championships, a district runner-up, two regional championships, and a regional runner-up, and we've had a state qualifier too, so, you know, big things for these girls as they move on in life. I know they're gonna accomplish some great things and probably accumulate GPA up here real close to four point oh, so I mean, it's not only. Not only do they succeed on the bowling lanes, but also in school as well, so, but thank you all very much and good luck, ladies. I will miss you, so I need some, I gotta recruit some girls for next year because I'm losing six of them, so, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, ladies. Did y'all get pictures? Y'all stay, let, y'all can come back and get pictures. You got it? Hang on, they're taking pictures.
I just wanna say Coach Mark is a dear coach, but he's also a pretty dear neighbor. He lives right down the street from me and we couldn't be more happy for that, so thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies.
All right, young ladies.
If Jacob and London wanna come up? All right, so Jacob Harrington and London Cates. Jacob represents Beach High School and London represents Liberty Creek High School, and they won Female and Male Bowler of the Year. And to win that award, you have to be more than just a really good bowler. You have to have really good character, you have to root on your teammates and keep your cool when you're out there competing because it gets quite competitive. And, but not only did these two win Bowler of the Year, they both had the highest average in their district, and the district for bowling here is multiple counties. And they also both were, were Bowler of the Year and they both also became the first pick for first-team all-district for Sumner County. So forgive them, let me read that, sorry. I need to read the proclamation. So I'll read the proclamation. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on the seventeenth day of March, 2025, does hereby honor and congratulate Jacob Harrington and London Cates for being Male and Female Bowler of the Year. I so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Just stay for it. All right, and Kyle Kemp, if you would come up? So one more. These kids are awesome and they deserve all the awards. So Kyle goes to Gallatin High School and all three of these children, well, I guess y'all are all eighteen now, students, all qualified for state and went and competed in the state championship in Smyrna, and they all did amazingly well. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation for that. Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on the seventeenth day of March, 2025, does hereby honor and congratulate Kyle Kemp, Jacob Harrington, and London Cates for being a bowling state qualifier. And one more thing, most of you know, but Jacob is my son, so extra special, yay! And I so move.
Do we have a motion? A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Congratulations, guys. Thank you all so much.
All right, Commissioner Jones has some certificates to award to Station Camp.
With the Station Camp High School Wrestling Team, come forward, please. Some of y'all can come over here, too. Some more over here, guys. Seems like just a few weeks ago, we were up here doing the same thing, but I thought last year was a special year to recognize them, but they've really outdone themselves again. So this is Station Camp's fourth year to have wrestling. This twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five team, wrestling team became back-to-back district dual champions, regional dual champions, sectional dual champions, state final four appearance, regional team champions, sectional team champions. They had twelve individual sectional qualifiers, ten state qualifiers. Last year, they had four state medalists. This year, they had five. Last year, the team placed fifth at the individual state championships. This year, they finished fourth. Wrestlers who medaled at the state championship were Thomas York, who placed sixth, Lincoln Rich, fifth, Fletcher Beck, fourth, Traceon Pettis, second, and Nate Graham was a state champion. The state champion, the, I'm sorry, the Station Camp Wrestling Team has now gone three years in a row without losing to a county opponent, setting their overall four-year mark at nineteen and two. Fletcher Beck was awarded the NFHS Student Athlete Award of Excellence presented by the TSSAA and National Federation of State High School Associations. Nate Graham was awarded the Frontline Soldier Award by the Frontline Ministries. They're an organization who exists to train up the next generation of athletes who don't put their identity in what they can do on a court or a field, but instead put their identity in who they are as sons and daughters of God. All mid-state honors were Thomas York and Fletcher Beck. Mid-state Wrestler of the Year for the lower weight divisions was Nate Graham, and mid-state Wrestler of the Year for the upper weights division was Traceon Pettis. And they had a team average, this is for the starting lineup, a grade point average of three point eight four. So I did ask about the overall because last year it was really high, too. Coach didn't have time to get it for me, but that's, that's pretty remarkable for the starting lineup to have a three point eight four GPA. So I'll read the proclamation now and then we'll give the coach a few minutes to speak. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on the seventeenth day of March, 2025, does hereby honor and congratulate the Station Camp High School Wrestling Team for winning the district, regional, and sectional team tournaments for qualifying twelve wrestlers to the, to the sectionals, ten to the state championship, and for having five state medalists and one state champion. Mr. Chairman, I so move that motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign.
I'm gonna let the coach say a few words while we're giving out the medals.
Commissioner Jones, I wonder if we could have the, the guys that were individually named, if you would raise your hand, if your name was individually mentioned, would you raise your hand high? Not like you're answering a question in class, okay? Very good.
Coach, come up here and speak while we're handing out the medals.
Thank you once again for having us and celebrating these young men and women. First and foremost, thank you to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for this opportunity to even be here and serve these students. One of the biggest things for us in our program, I think the biggest, most important is our belief system and what it is that we carry through our day-to-day task and our day-to-day routine. And that's what it means to have character, a positive attitude, be able to build relationships with other people. How are you gonna motivate the people around you? Do you have belief in yourself and others that are working for you and with you? How are you influencing the people around you, whether it's at school, on your team, at home, in the community? How are you serving other people? Serving other people in a selfless way? And so we talk about all of those things. We talk about what it means to be observant to the important things around us and then, of course, to never ever quit. And so we've come up with an acronym called Camp Bison. We live by that. But I think what made this year so special, more special than the, the wrestling accolades, is just all of the, the things that we just, I just talked about in Camp Bison, all of the things that these guys have done behind the scenes. And I think about Lincoln Rich, right? He placed his fifth in the state, but he wrestled all year with a broken back. What? And, you know, and he goes in for surgery two days after the season's over. Bryce Van Story, herniated disc and the same break in his back. Like unbelievable. And these are things that the doctors clear and they're like, okay, if you can go through the pain, you can continue. And I think about Nate Graham. And if you haven't heard his story, it's really remarkable. He was paralyzed from the neck down eighteen months ago. And somehow he fights his way back through all the adversity that is taken for him and the scoliosis that he fights through daily to be the first state champion in school history. Remarkable. And so that's why when I said at the beginning, it's humbling to be a part of these, this whole process with these guys. I'm just so thankful. But the list goes on. And I've left somebody out, you know, I'm sorry, but the list goes on. I could go on and on, and I don't have that much time tonight, but I will say this. What's been so special about this season, even more remarkable than the other things that I just described, we unfortunately lost a close member to our wrestling community just a few weeks ago. Her son wrestled for us last year and it changed his life in the most amazing ways. If you wouldn't mind, just trust me in that, it changed his life. In fact, now he's wrestling in college. Better yet, going to college. Reading her obituary brought true tears to my eyes because it helped remind me that this is so much bigger than wrestling, so much bigger than a sport, so much bigger than winning and losing. At the end of this woman's life, the only thing that she had asked for was to please donate to the leukemia fund and to Station Camp Wrestling. And I think what made that so humbling is that these young men and women are impacting people in the community in such a way that it's truly impacting their lives, even to the end of their lives. And so we have, we've had checks coming in around the country, just received a letter from a guy in South Carolina. I don't know him, but he had so many kind words to say about our program. And I think about that and it represents Sumner County, it represents the state of Tennessee, and it represents Station Camp High School. And thank you so much for honoring these guys and girls, by the way, we're starting the girls team. Thank you for honoring them. Thank you for being patient, taking time out of your night, on a Monday night, to give them love and support. Thank you so much.
All right. At this time, we'll have recognition of the public. We have one person who has signed up, Tracy Parker. If you would give your name and your total, your address, please. Tracy Parker? Is Tracy Parker here?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Parker. I live at 1110 Woodville Drive in Gallatin, and I came to speak to the issue on the library board membership. I really feel like we need to stay at 11 because we need some diversity on our board. We do not have all of our geographical areas represented, and I think that's really important. And again, I would just ask for transparency in that process of choosing them and to move on from the gentlemen who've already been brought forth three times. Thank you.
Thank you. Under report of the chair, the Veteran's Service Report is attached to your information and docketing financial statement memo. Report of county officials, I might add, too, that I wanted to further explain, which I will next month, the issue that I tried to hit very briefly at the end of the meeting last week because with budgets coming on, I feel like it's very, very important. The worst possible scenario, and I'll give a little bit more information next month, the worst possible scenario that could happen to a local school system is for the state to say, we are raising the salary of teachers. The formulas that the state has does not furnish enough money because every single teacher in every single classroom in the county that doesn't fit the exact pupil-teacher ratio according to a state formula, and you have to hire an extra teacher to stay within the state, that is not funded. And I did a little calculation today that if that happened in just one, one grade per school, it would be about $3.5 million with teacher salaries and benefits. So I'm just telling you in advance, so we're ready for this at budget time because the state is talking about giving us money for, to raise teacher salaries to $50,000. They're giving you money, but they're not giving you enough money for all of the personnel in the school system, and it is a, it was always a terrible situation for us to hear the state say, not that they didn't deserve it, but we knew what was coming as a result of it, we're going to give a teacher's salary increase. That, the only way that you could get around that is if you had no personnel beyond the state mandated level. And I checked today, and if the person is right at the state that I talked with, there is not one single system in the state of Tennessee, large, small city or county, that has the, that is able to survive on what is called a state minimum schedule. Enough for that, and I hope to give you more information on that. Written reports are filed by county officials. Do I hear a motion for notaries?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to do that on the board? We do need to do that on the board, so if you will...
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Someone did not vote. Okay. It's unanimous. All right. Report of standing committees?
This MOU is just, just an agreement between the county and the Sheriff's Department for things to carry on as normal, and it just, it, it needs to be in place. It, it's something that we have to have to continue forward with the agreement.
Motion and a second. No one's in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Education? Highway?
The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is the addition of Ridge Hill Road to the county road list. What that was is a citizen came and asked us to add his road to the county road list because he got D-Nixed. He asked to be D-Nixed from his city like three years ago, and they never, we never added his road on, so his road has not been maintained by anybody. The city wasn't doing it. That's why he asked for it to be D-N, D-Nixed, and now he's asking for us to do it. Superintendent Ellis has no problem with this, and it passed unanimously.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Teasner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. General operations?
Resolution 2503-12 to declare and authorize sale or disposal of surplus property from the Health Department, I so move.
Motion and a second, seeing no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Committee on Committees?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the Solid Waste Board, Ada Nelson, a six-year term, I so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.
No.
Okay, we have one no. Pardon? Yes, we, we are holding. The chairman notified me that we will be bringing up at the next Committee on Committee meeting the name of Mike Marino. Legislative committee? Oh, okay. All right. Budget committee?
Let's lay it out.
Legislative.
No, no, no. You're doing, remember we added, the adding, filling Palmero's vacancy?
Oh, okay. Yes. I was reminded that we did add to the agenda, and I apologize for that. We, we added to the agenda the position of Mr. Palmeroy leaving the Budget Committee and the addition of Mr. Harrison to that. That was to be added to the agenda. Commissioner Teasner?
Mr. Chairman, so this is about that position, correct?
Yes.
Will, will you be accepting nominations?
This will be voting yes or no for that, for Mr. Harrison.
Who nominated Mr. Harrison, sir?
It was nominated at the very beginning of the meeting. He did two things in one. He, he mentioned the name.
We're ready. It was my fault. I was, obviously don't do this very often, so went to Mr., sorry, Chairman Hyde, and asked how to make a motion like that. And then when I came back, did not say the name. I did say the name before the meeting. He said I did not need to do that, and so I think he had that on his mind and with Mark doing the invocation tonight. So it's my fault completely that he had that. There was no, I think there was talk of sunshine violation. There was nothing like that. It was, this is who I would like and what I would like to do, how do I craft this? And, and that's what was, was going on, so...
I would suggest now that you just get in the queue to...
I will gladly do that, but I wanted to clear up that it was not anything that you did with ill intent at all, and I did not make that, say a name at all.
I did not take it in a bad way, but you did thoroughly confuse me, so. Commissioner Schof?
Well, I'm still in the queue, Ms. Hyde. So if, if we're accepting nominations, if it's okay with, I haven't spoken to him because I didn't know anything about this vacancy, but I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bob Brown for, for this position.
Second. All right. Mr. Brown's name has been mentioned, and is there any objection to having the names listed and voted on at one time rather than going through one at a time? No objection, so that's what we'll do. Mr. Brown's name has been nominated. Mr. Schof?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to stay consistent here. You know, last month, I, I commented that, on a different object, I felt that regarding the assumption of debt for some of the upgrades to various facilities by private citizens, I didn't necessarily have a problem with it, but I had a, an issue with the fact that it was bypassing the Budget Committee. And I, I hope that that's still the case. And so I'm putting myself in the shoes of the Committee on Committees now, and, you know, it's the same, the same thing. We're, we're just kind of bypassing them. Look, this, this body can do whatever it wants to do, but I'm going to offer an amendment, and maybe this is just like a rubber stamp thing, but whatever, whoever we choose to nominate, because these are in there, that it be modified to be a recommendation back to Committee on Committees so that they can vet it and send it forward through the appropriate process. That's my view.
All right. The understanding here is that it'll go back to Committee on Committees. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on that particular amendment? All right. Place that on the board, Madam Clerk. Green will be yes, and red is a no to that amendment.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
That amendment fails. All right, we're back to Commissioner Lambert. Commissioner Lambert?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Harrison to fill the void. We, coming off of not having a quorum at the last meeting, I feel like it's appropriate to do so tonight as we roll into budget, budget hearings and, and budget season.
All right. Motion and a second on that. Commissioner Janung?
Thank you, Chairman. I feel like this should have been originally put through Committee on Committee. Anyway, like you say, you can do whatever you want here, and obviously that's how we're rolling now. We're just doing whatever the hell we want. So I would like to nominate Tim Jones to be on the Budget Committee if he would do so for me, and that's my nomination for the Budget Committee is Tim Jones.
All right. Tim Jones' name has been placed in nomination. Seeing no one else in the... He declines being nominated, okay. We have two names in, and I'm asking the clerk to place those on the board, and the first one nominated was, who was nominated first would be? Commissioner Brown will be yes and, or green, pardon me, and Commissioner Harrison will be red.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Commissioner Harrison is elected with 14 votes. All right. Legislative committee?
Resolution 2503-13 is to reduce the library board from 11 members to 9 members, and I so move.
Motion and a second, seeing no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign?
No.
Place that on the board, clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Okay, that's a substantial vote of 18 to 5. Right. Budget committee? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign? Financial management? Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign?